What was the common council meeting for the month of March or month of June to order? Would you please rise for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, roll please.
Brown.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Foody.
Here.
Grattan.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Shanks. Excuse that, sir. Mayor Oden.
Here. First item of business is agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Schuster, second by Grattan. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Next we have approval of minutes of the previous meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Evans. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Two minutes of inter-deeming meetings?
So moved.
Sorry. Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next we have public appearances and citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Let the record show there are none. Next we have communications. Gail Amsler. You all know as of the first year that our rec director, Gail Amsler, who gave us 27 years of service, not only just on the rec department, she was crossing guard, she was janitor, she did just about anything we asked of her. Gail's definitely a hard act to follow, there's no two ways about that.
I didn't recognize her at all.
Most kids in the community know her as Grandma Gail. She has a unique knack of remembering every child's name, making sure that every child had equal time during the ball games and what have you. I personally had three children who went through the programs and they're all good people because of Gail. So with no further ado, I'd like to present just a small token of our appreciation to you, Gail, for your service to the community, for the service to the city of Juneau.
Thank you. Glad to have time here at the city and I miss you. Retirement is a little hard right now. Learning how to stay home with my husband and stuff like that. But now I've got into baseball and softball, helping coach and do stuff, so I'm kind of getting back into swinging things again, so.
Well, don't go out with the neighbor's husband. Stick it to your husband.
Yes.
You did an awesome job, Gail.
Yes, she did.
Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you.
I'd like to share a story about Gail. I don't know if she remembers this or not. My daughter had her for softball, probably from T-ball up to their softball days and what have you. Just to show you what kind of person Gail was, I had casually mentioned to my daughter on taking her to a traveling league game or something, and we were over at Resco. And my daughter commonly played first base, she had pretty good gloves, and kind of knew who could throw the ball hard, who didn't, and what have you. And I just casually, I says, "Do you ever try playing someplace else?" And she knew that I played a little catcher in high school and whatever, so I suggested, "Why don't you try catching once?" And I says, "That kind of keeps you in the game all the time and what have you." So I think the game was about nine to five, or nine to four, or something like that. And Stacy went up to Coach Gail and said, "Hey, could I try catching once?" Sure, sure. Put her in, got her geared up. Squatted behind the plate, few pitches back and forth and whatever, we were ready to start playing ball. And I think first ball gets hit, we got somebody on. Next ball is pitched, Stacy trying to catch the runner to second, goes right over to second baseman's head, all the way to the fence, run scored. Next time around, third baseman, or runner to third, she fires it over there. Gail's getting a little upset, she's getting really, "We're gonna lose this ballgame," and what have you. So anyway, score is tied up, and of course, you know, with girls, there's no crying in baseball, you know, that's not allowed, you know, whatever. Gail put her arm around her, what have you, and here we are in the bottom of the seventh, I think that's the only play seven any games there. Must've said something to her, because she cracked the wall after two men were on base and whatever, and we wound up winning the game. That's the kind of coach and person that Gail Amsler is, you know. She knows how to approach the youth and coach them to be better people. I thank you.
Thank you. Tell her I'm too bad.
You were scared, weren't you? You were worried I was gonna remember some of those other things. So at this time, we have any other communications?
I handed out earlier before the meeting here a little packet from Dodge County Housing, survey that they're doing. So in February, the Dodge County Executive Committee authorized a county housing study through University of Wisconsin-Whitewater. This was actually presented yesterday at the executive committee, though it was more of kind of a whole county presentation. This is just an excerpt from the 134 pages of the full county, which includes the city of Juneau as well. Just wanted to put it in front of you more for kind of your information. If you have any questions, please let me know. The biggest thing that I've noticed out of this, kind of the tables, is we've issued only 13 new building permits within the last six years. And their projection, kind of on the second to last page here, is that by the year of 2030, we're gonna be short about 27 households within the city. So kind of telling me that we need to start looking at getting some new development and building houses within the city to kind of keep up with the changes that they predict to be coming here shortly.
You're talking about building permits for new homes?
For new homes, correct, yes. And the full report can be found on the Dodge County website under the county board homepage.
Andrew and I, where I shared this table, and the questions, those fluctuations between 17 and 2020, we don't understand how we went down 1.7, jumped up 21.1, went down 17.4, and then jumped up 37.8. It doesn't seem quite right, it seems like we're kind of correcting.
Right. Didn't seem like there was a reduction at all in 2019, perhaps a small increase. In 2020, there certainly has been a large increase, but maybe not quite that large. So some of those figures on the first page seem a little out of line.
Okay, anything else, Andrew? Or anything else, Sean?
No, that's it.
Okay, moving on. Approved payments of bills, checks for $163,380.17. Vouchers for $364.24. Electronic transfers for $609,784.59. Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Foody, second by Schuster. Oh, Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Foody.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Payment of bills have been approved. Okay, Resolution 15, 2021, approve mayorial appointment with Recreation Committee. Whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing to give themselves by serving on the Recreation Committee, and whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointments. Kara Ernsted, Recreation Committee, term ends 6th of 2023. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 8th day of June 2020.
One.
2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve the...
So moved.
Motion by Foody.
Second.
Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? We saw the bio that she sent. I've only met the woman one time, she was a property owner, and she put forth a very impressive bio and applications. I see no reason why she can't serve. No further discussion, questions, roll call vote, please.
Foody.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 15, 2021 has passed. Quick treasure.
I have nothing recorded this time.
Written reports, any questions on the building permit report, the police department report, Juneau fire and rescue report, or the Juneau EMS report? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports, committees, commissions, and boards. Library report. Jeanette Thran, who is not here with us tonight, and Cheryl Brown has offered her read her report.
Are you willing to read?
For the viewing public. Yes, if you would.
This is from Jeanette. The Juneau Public Library is happy to announce our summer reading challenge theme for 2021, Tales and Tales. That's T-A-L-E-S and T-A-I-L-S. All ages can register for the reading challenge best suited for them. Age categories are early literacy, which is zero to five, kids, which is six to 12, teens, which is 13 to 17, and adults is 18 plus. The summer reading challenge runs for eight weeks from June 7th to July 31st, and registration is required, and the program will be run through the Bean Stack app. New this year is a badge book for kids ages six to 12. The badge book corresponds with the app and makes the tracking of reading and activities more engaging. Badge books are limited to the first 50 children ages six to 12 to register, so make sure you register early. Saturday, June 12th, is Juneau Citywide Roman Sale. And while you are out and about looking for bargains, make sure you swing by the library between 9:00 and 11:00 that morning to enjoy some free fun at the library's Look and Learn Farm Expo. Children and adults will have a chance to meet, greet, learn about, and pet an assortment of farm animals. This program is a partnership between the Juneau Public Library and the Juneau Victorians 4-H Club. All participants will also be given a delicious dairy treat to enjoy after the expo. This is not in her report, but it is June Dairy Month, so. Juneau Public Library will be hosting an in-person preschool storytime on Monday, June 21st at 10 o'clock in the morning. Children and their parents or guardians will enjoy several stories, some of which will be read by our guest reader, Jill Wagner. Jill will also be bringing with her some of her pet guinea pigs and rabbits for the children to enjoy. A take and make craft will be given to the children to complete at their homes after the storytime. On Wednesday, June 23rd, the library lawn will be transformed into a place full of magical bubble fun. Come dressed to get a bit wet as we enjoy making bubbles of all shapes and sizes. The program runs from 3:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon. Have you ventured out on the Wild Goose Trail this month? If you have not, make plans to take a walk or ride a bike on it soon. During the month of June, the Juneau Public Library, in partnership with the Dodge County Parks Department, is hosting a story walk. The walk begins near the shelter house in the Wild Goose Park and continues south along the stretch of trail between the park and Center Street. The story walk features the popular children's book, My Lucky Day, by Kigo Keiza. All 30 pages of the book are on display, so you can enjoy your walk and a story all at the same time. This activity is suitable for all ages. If you are participating in the summer reading challenge, enjoying this story walk counts for one of the activities that can earn you points towards the school prizes. Winner winner chicken dinner. Do you want to be a Juneau Tail Tracker this summer? That's T-A-I-L, Tracker. For eight weeks, the library will be hiding eight different tails in or around the city of Juneau. Tail locations will be revealed through a series of daily clues that participants can view on the library's website, Facebook page, or at the library. There is a new tail to be found each week, and those who successfully find the tail can enter each week, week for a chance to win a pig-out goody basket full of animal-inspired foods. Yep, you better believe that there are goldfish crackers and zebra cakes in that basket, along with many other delicious items. It doesn't say bacon on there, but maybe.
If I could close my eyes, I could just visualize her standing there. As you fluctuated your voice. Thank you, Cheryl. Moving on, planning commission.
Plan Commission. We had automated pet care was there, came to the meeting, and we discussed combining the parcels on Western Avenue, as well as how to join in the piece that they have on Fairfield Avenue. And we made it from I-2 to a planned development, which would allow them to have the breezeway that connects the two facilities from Fairfield to Western Avenue, going across the lot line. That the planned development allows that activity to happen. They also, I don't know whether they bought or made a trade, it wasn't discussed, but they made a 20-foot exchange with Bib Properties on the north side to help allow all that to happen. We also discussed tree trimming, that 15-foot height from the street and... Was it 10? I don't know, it's in the, there's a resolution to read with Public Works, and the measurements are in that. I didn't bring my notes along, I'm sorry I failed to do that, and so I don't have notes to open. I don't remember anything else going on in the meeting.
We reviewed the pet clinic.
Pet clinic, that's right. We reviewed with the pet clinic that she has lost her veterinary, so she is going to be doing doggy daycare, doggy boarding. Now instead, the I-1 zoning that she is in allows that, so she's going to have that for her new business now. She has licenses and has taken programs and classes to have the accreditation to do what she does. So I have a resolution for automated pet care for combining the parcels. Resolution 16-2021, approve combining parcels, automated pet care. Whereas the plan commission has reviewed a request to combine two parcels into one parcel, and whereas the two parcels, 241-1115-2812-014 and 241-1115-2812-015, and the small 20-foot section of land, no parcel number, rented from Bib Properties, will be combined as automated pet care under one parcel and recorded with a new address of 522 South Western Avenue. Whereas the plan commission recommends to approve the combining of the two parcels to make the one with the new address of 522 South Western Avenue. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 8th day of June 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 16, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Grattan, second by Foody. Any further discussion?
The address is changing to 522 South Western Ave. Is that gonna be their main entrance then, or that's just what they're using as their mailbox?
That will be more of the office terminal, what have you, though.
Instead of on the...
Well, they're gonna have a parking lot on both sides, hoping to get all their excess parking off the street. So there will be workers that'll come in off the Fairfield Avenue side, shipping and receiving will be on the other side. So there's gonna be employees coming in off of both streets, and both parking on our car.
And I know what you're talking about, how the ordinance reads, but if they choose to have their main addresses off of Western, that's okay?
Yeah, it's not a problem, I just was asking, picturing it in my mind, because right now on Western Ave, that's their new building area, correct?
Right, that's right.
So that's where they're putting their, okay, that's why I was asking.
The new 150,000 square foot building they're putting up will be there. The fascade on the west side is gonna have the glass in the center, you know, sticking out. It looks beautiful on paper. That's where the trucks are gonna be bringing in the materials, the raw materials in, yes, come in bulk, so it'd be a circular drive, so that there won't be semis backing in off the road. And they'll still be using the Fairfield driveway as well with the semis, because they'll be shipping out of theirs.
So there'll be more semi-traffic on Western Avenue?
We talked about that. They're thinking that most of it'll still come in on Fairfield and then hook around to the south, because the void that, that 26 intersection is not real user-friendly there, especially with semi-trucks. I think they'd rather come in off the flat and come off on the south side, side on Kent Street, and then come off Fairfield to the north, and probably exit that way as well.
As well as they want to stay away from the school.
Yeah. You know, with a lot of the traffic. So. The causeway that connects the two buildings can be removed, though it is going to be built as a permanent structure. It's not just a ramp, thing is all fire-protected with fire doors or sprinkler systems. That's their absolute dividing mark between the two properties is the center of that. So one half of it'll be fed off of one building, the other half will be fed off the other building, and if the operations would separate at some time, they're all in compliance with setbacks if they have new owners and what have you, so. It's commonly something that's done like in malls and what have you, too, where they, we have private owners sharing a common wall, you know.
Makes sense to do it this way, you have two different owners, but connected with the same business, this is a perfect use of the planned development.
So the parcel, do they adopt one of these parcel numbers, or...
One building? Yeah, the two, to go back, what they acquired from the CDA and from the city of Juneau were two separate lots that faced west off of Western, and what happened is, one was owned by the CDA, and one was owned by the council or by the city of Juneau at the time before the creation of the CDA. So they had to combine two parcels into one, and that would be their Western Avenue parcel. And it's simply logistics with the owner there on how he was sole owner of the first property, and now he's built a corporation and what have you, so.
You were asking about combining the parcel numbers, which one they'll take, though?
Yes.
The county will assign the new number then, when they combine, when it's recorded and everything?
Yeah, they won't be receiving two tax statements, I'm sure.
No, they'll get one.
One tax statement for one street, and one tax statement for the other street, so.
I was just wondering about the parcel money.
Then Bib Properties has to have, their lot has to be redone, so it's smaller, because he'd be paying less tax, because he gave up 20 feet. So you got three of them that have to push together.
So everything's in compliance with setbacks, whatever, if the two would ever separate?
There's gonna be retention pond in the southwest, southwest corner of the property, that all the rainwater is gonna go underground from the gutters and end up in that pond, so. It's a well-thought-out, well-designed building. Proud that they're here and things go well.
Sounds good to see a business grow.
Yeah, growing, yeah. Once they get that building up, they're gonna be looking for another 100 employees.
Yeah. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Foody.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 16, 2021 has passed.
Resolution 17.2021, approve rezoning 561 South Fairfield Avenue, I-2 General Industrial to PD Plan Development. Whereas the plan commission held a public hearing on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2021, to hear the public comment regarding the proposed change in zoning for the property located at 561 South Fairfield Avenue and the new property located at 522 South Western Avenue. Whereas the property at 561 South Fairfield Avenue and 522 South Western Avenue is zoned I-2 General Industrial, the owners are requesting to rezone property to PD Plan Development, keeping the parcels as owned by separate entities and allowing a possible relaxation of certain development standards pertaining to the underlying standard zoning district. Whereas the plan commission recommends to approve the zoning change from I-2 General Industrial to PD Plan Development, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 8th day of June 2021. I move for pass, I move for passage of Resolution 17, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Grattan, second by Foody. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? I think we pretty much answered all those. Roll call vote, please.
Grattan.
Aye.
Foody.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 17, 2021 has passed. Any other questions for David? Something else that I was thinking we missed? I'll come up with it later. Moving on, finance.
We did meet, and we'll have a couple of resolutions to read. We discussed approving an authorization of 35 by 40 by six-inch apron in front of the VPW salt shed. Part of that is requirement of the building inspector, so we don't have the salt leaching into the soil there as we use that facility. Talked about increasing the camping fees at the Wild Goose Park, and we'll have a resolution on that. Also talked about a line striper for the Parks and Rec Department for striping fields, so that it helps them in the speed of it, being more efficient and be more accurate with it as well. Did have a closed session in regards to the community center lease, that is going, been going to be continuing on that conversation. And then we also looked at the, had an update on the West Street update, did let the county know that we were disappointed with them with the way that they handled the change in the pricing from the original price to complete the West Street project, but we're going through with that, there was no change apart from the county on that, although we did ask. The ARP committee, the funding has, or the guidelines have been released from the American Restoration Plan, right? Is that what it?
American Recovery.
Recovery Plan. I got the wrong one. Anyway, practiced all afternoon and still got it wrong. There will be, that committee is forming, is being formed, and we're working to have six people on that. It is a short-term committee, as we had approved for the delegation of those funds, and we are working on getting those people together to finish that up. I don't believe there was anything else at this point in time on those, so we'll go with our resolutions. Resolution 18, 2021, approve increasing city camping fees, whereas the finance committee has reviewed a request from Parks and Recreation Department to raise the rate for camping fees. Whereas the finance committee recommends to increase the fee to $20 per night and to update the city fee schedule with this change. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 8th day of June 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 18, 2021.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? This was kicked around at rec committee level. Our police chief was a little concerned that we had some squatters that were down there and said, say that, you know, in this day and age that we have people that are kind of forced to live in tents at certain times and what have you, so he was a little concerned that we were, that we should increase the price of the camping for these primitive sites, they don't include water, they don't include electric, though sometimes we have some people that try to use that, run an extension cord from the rec building or the shelter down there and what have you. But what we decided to do was just double the fee, they were able, they're on the honor system there, and I guess from what we understand, that they have been always paying and what have you, but not to, not to start a small... But not to, not to start a small village down there. We thought that this might discourage some of them from, from staying there and what have you. We haven't had any issues. There's been no, nothing other than occasional ambulance call for the health of the people that live there and whatever. But other than that, they've taken care of the grounds and what have you. So it's just a way to generate a little more income and maybe discourage, you know, not so many of them to stay down there for as long. And then they're also setting a limit of two or three days, two days that they're allowed to, to camp and then they have to move on. Any other questions? Say none, roll call vote please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Resolution 182021 has passed.
Resolution 192021, approve purchase of line striping paint sprayer for the Recreation Department. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed a request from the Recreation Department to purchase a line striping paint sprayer. Whereas the Finance Committee recommends to approve the purchase of a line striping paint sprayer now to exceed $1,430 using money from the General Contingency Fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 8th day of June 2020, 21. I move for passage of Resolution 192021.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Brown. Any further discussion?
This came up because we learned that our rec leader is, is doing this with aerosol can type of striping, paint striping and had cases and cases of this. And we believe this will be a much more efficient way for him to be able to either delegate it to have it done or to do it himself without all the additional waste involved as well from the aerosol cans. And, you know, a lot of less refuse, but time savings and time is money.
Any other questions? All, oh, roll call vote please.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 192021 has passed.
Resolution 202021, approve installation of apron for the salt shed. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed a request from the Public Works Department to install a 35-foot by 40-foot by six-inch apron in front of the DPW salt shed. Whereas the Public Works and Finance Committee recommend to approve the purchase in an amount not to exceed $8,440. Whereas the funds would be taken from the $550,000 borrowing amount allocated for road improvements in Resolution 92021. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 8th day of June 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 202021.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Fuddy. Further discussion? Only correction, only of Cheryl is that that was a state inspector, not our building inspector.
This, this was chosen to take from the borrowing amount for road improvements because we felt that there is additional monies in that borrowing amount that we put out to them for roads improvements and conditioning that it couldn't come out of there because salt is put on the roads.
Roll call vote please.
Brown.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 2021, 2021 has passed. Any other discussion?
I don't have anything else.
Personnel Committee Chairman Report. Do you want to take that, Cheryl?
I am not remembering, I'll be honest with you. Well, we had, Tim Gassner did turn in his resignation, his retirement, excuse me, and his retirement was accepted. That's the last statement. That was our only other.
That's it? Okay. Moving on, Public Safety.
We did a meeting. Attorney Chief had three calls for April. And that, Police Chief, there kind of stole my, on that and the park. They had some squatters on there and he said they had to set up appliances and everything else and furniture down there. So they had raised the fee, so I sent that to Recreation Committee on the fee and how many days you could stay down there. There are like 10 burn pits down there, primitive camp sites, so you can go down there and stay. And then we discussed a resolution on that for approval, extension premise for the 1850s. They want to put some tables and chairs and maybe a fence out. I know went to Plan Commission, I don't know if everything went there well at Plan Commission.
That was what we forgot.
Dawn on me when he said that. I knew I'd remember it.
So I know they had some plans and stuff, they took the Plan Commission and stuff.
Correct.
Because they're seeding and I think they want to put a fence up also where the curb.
It's up.
It's up, ready? Okay.
They'll get on it rest, we probably speak.
Yeah, they want to put table and chairs out there and try some outdoor dining. And then we had a, another one, we had some tree trimming issues because one of the farmers in Talon had hit their GPS on their tractor or trailer and the damage was quite expensive. So we sent that to Public Works to go on that. We also did all the, checked on the beer license and alcohol license and got a resolution on it also. EMS report, Dan Hill's report, 29 calls in April. And they had a couple of new recruits. They're still looking for people, so if you're interested in EMS or fire department, they're looking for, for people, for personnel. So if you know anybody, wants to be a fireman or EMS, okay, I believe it's on the website, isn't it? The application, I believe. That's all I got for that and I got the resolution. Resolution 212021, approve to grant beer and liquor license. Whereas the City of Juneau has received applications from the following to sell malt beverages and liquor with the period ending June 30, 2022, Eshombalu, Lolo. Class A beer applying as a limited liability company, Dollar General, store number 6775, Woodland Corp. LLC, 331 East Center Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Air Mac Can, agent address 609 Grandview Drive, Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, 53590. Class A beer and liquor applying as a limited liability company, Pig Wiggly, number 304, Yankee Pig Wiggly, number 304, 100 South Western Avenue, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Danielle Yonkey, agent address 329 East North Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Class A beer and liquor applying as a limited liability company, Juneau 26, Inc., MPS Mark LLC, 470 North Main Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Cheville Sotoka, agent address 214B North Main Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Class A beer and class A liquor, cider only, applying as a corporation, Quick Trip, number 324, Quick Trip Incorporated, 210 South Main Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Amanda Schultz, agent address 215 Woodland Drive, Apartment 1, Beaver Dam, Wisconsin, 53916. Class beer and liquor applying as a limited liability company, 1850s Inn LLC, 1850s Inn LLC, 172 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Kristen Serman, agent address 126 and 1/2 Front Street, Beaver Dam, Wisconsin, 53916. Juneau Lanes LLC, Juneau Lanes LLC, 150 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Brent Bowman, agent address 148 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Jason White Catering LLC, Jason White Catering LLC, 500 Lincoln Drive, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Jason White, 240 North High Street, Ranoff, Wisconsin, 53956. Rolling Stone Pizza Pub LLC, Rolling Stone Pizza Pub LLC, 153 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Tamara Christensen, agent address 103 Leonard Avenue, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Solomon's, STR LLC, 112 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent, Donald Raphael, agent address 5615 Grand Drive, Glenville, Wisconsin, 53129. Class B beer and liquor applies as a partnership, Simple Bar and Grill, Simple Bar and Grill, 160 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Class B beer and liquor applying as a corporation, nonprofit organization, Juneau American Legion, Juneau Post number 15 of the American Legion Department of Wisconsin. Agent, Charles Griffin, 162 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Agent address W 7035 Highway W, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039. Whereas the notice was published in the Watertown Daily Times in three consecutive publications and whereas the Public Safety Committee and the Juneau Police Department have reviewed and above both recommended approval of these applications pending compliance with ordinance 5.08.040. And now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 8th day of June 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 212021.
Second.
As long as there are no taxes due or anything, they were going to check on that and as long as everything passed, it would be okay, so.
Motion by Schuster, second by Evans. Any further discussion?
Why don't we have an agent for Simple Bar and Grill? Everyone else has an agent.
We did this last.
We talked about.
Because when you apply as a individual or partnership, you do not have an agent.
Well, okay.
And somebody may have a question, regards to Jason White. As John, or Alderman Schuster had mentioned, pending our ordinance 5.08.040. So as long as they're up to date with past dues or any money that's owed to the city, these will be given to each individual person. If they, if it is not by the end of this month, then it will not be, so.
Any other discussion, questions or comments? Roll call vote please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Resolution 212021 has passed.
Resolution 222021, approve to extend premise, 1850s Inn Sidewalk Cafe. Whereas the Public Safety Committee and Plant Commission has reviewed a request on site plans for the 1850s to extend premise to the sidewalk at 172 East Oak Street for the Sidewalk Cafe. And whereas the 1850s Inn requests to have their licensed premise extend to include the sidewalk and front of their establishment from June 1, 2021 through October 1, 2021 as a part of the pilot program. And whereas all hard liquor and wine coolers must be in plastic containers. And whereas the Public Safety Committee and Plant Commission recommend approving the request as per.
Standard book.
Now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 8th day of June 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 222021.
Second. Motion by Schuster, second by Brown. Further discussion? David will let you finish your report.
My Plant Commission report. Yeah, Shasha came to us with a drawing of how the fence was going to lay out. Would the gate in his fence would line up with the present doorway that he has, the glass door? That way there it's handicapped accessible, he was straight in. We discussed possible changing it to a side location, but then he felt it would be difficult to keep control of people staying in the box, more or less, with their beverages, they could just pop around the corner and be gone. So it's like, yeah, he had thought about that. His tables are going to be built so that they're level with the sidewalk, the way it's put and then bolted down so that they're not tipping tables over. The chairs are going to be built the same, will fit certain places. I think he really put time into thinking about how to have this done. It's, it's going to be nice and orderly. I mean, Liquid's done with his establishment, it's, it looks great. So it's a pilot program that Public Safety got started and I'm hoping that it works out real well in Juneau.
Yeah, we've tried for years, seen any problems or what goes on. Hope you saw, you know, the Justin Williams kind of maybe threw something to it this year or not, but.
Didn't figure he could fit it into his budget this year, but he's looking at moving on next year, so.
Yeah, I think that's why too, they're really a.
I encourage you all in your travels, if you want to pass by tonight, they're hard at it. He had custom railings made, they all got a nice shiny gloss black finish on them and they're pretty, pretty attractive what he's got set up there. And he said he must have jumped on it about the day after we met because he was installing them tonight. I just rolled down to him and talked to him briefly. He did ask, he says, "After the night, I can go," right? I says, "It's on the council agenda." So I said, so he says, "I can act on it this Friday if I wish." And I said, "That's my assumption as long as it passes." So I says, "I didn't feel that there'd be any opposition."
Like Dave said too, I think he put a lot of thought into this.
Yeah, he put a lot of money in that tavern.
Yeah.
Along with.
Obviously it looks nice.
Good to see, yeah.
Along with the extension of premise, his insurance liability covers the footage of the sidewalk that he's using that's actually the city's.
He reported that his and Brett's insurance both goes several hundred feet beyond their premise. Because that's, must be standard insurance or something for taverns or something like that.
Better to have it extend.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think he's, he's running with it, so. No further questions, roll call vote please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
That's all ahead for Public Safety.
Resolution 222021 has passed. Anything else in public?
No, that's it.
Oh, not Public Works.
Public Works.
Oh, you lost your report.
I lost, I lost. I don't know, it's in here somewhere. We talked about the, the apron, the concrete apron up front that the state recommended so that if you have spillage coming out, you weren't leaving, having ground contamination with the salt. We discussed, oh boy, I wish I could find it in here.
I don't know if it's in there. Let me, give me a second, I can print it out here.
Did you look before you couldn't find it, was it? I couldn't find Plant Commission, well.
Tree trimmers?
Well, we discussed the tree trimming. I was on, did we discuss the dumpster as well?
Yep.
I think we discussed the dumpster. Public Safety, here we are. You got to be able to find what you're supposed to talk about. Well, Public Safety is yours.
He's never coached us on those margins on how we do it.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
Thank you.
Sometimes I luck out and get it, sometimes I don't.
We reviewed and possibly approved the dumpster hours and procedures. Our guys at the Public Works are running the dumpster now. They're, we're all drawing straws, so they say. Each one's appointed a, a time to be there as a shift. So we've got quotes, Scott got quotes from Waste Management. It's $125 a dumpster at $45 a ton per dumpster. So how many tons you got, it's going to charge. GFL is going to charge $225 for the dumpster plus $53 per ton. And Badger's going to be $250 for the dumpster and $57 a ton. So we are hoping we can stay with Waste Management Company. Scott's going to be working on that. Talked about the bid for the salt approach and changing the tree ornaments. Old business, South Main Street, the dirt was completed. The DPW is looking for a different street sweeper, they're still looking for that. They're looking at bids of adding onto a storage shed, but we decided that with the cost of materials nowadays, we should wait for that. They're marking the corner of Kinta Industrial Drive to getting estimates from contractors to dig up the culvert that runs Kitty Cor- to dig up the culvert that runs kitty corner across that intersection. It is rotted out on the bottom, there's, so we're taking dirt down the ditch, which we shouldn't be doing. Then there was a Highland Street meeting was coming up, which we had with the Highland people that lived on Highland Street.
Were there a lot that attended?
Maybe a dozen.
A dozen, fifteen maybe. Most of them were from Oak.
Of course.
Well, preempting what's going to come.
No, those are very informative, I was just hoping there would have been more meetings.
Yeah, I wish there were more people would have come. You know, I heard some goofy things that, you know, how the story gets turned as it goes around the table, and anyhow, so, let's see.
Question. I was going to have you ask our finance chair. We were told that our finance chair authorized overtime for full-time employees to watch the dump. I can tell when that can't be accurate then. Right now, we have full-time employees on overtime babysitting our dumpsters on Saturday.
I believe the comment was made, as far as the service, it was not authorized. It's a matter of if you need that overtime, you have to get it authorized, if that's how it's going to be. I guess, Dave, one of my questions in regards to the city dump site, what exactly are the procedures that are supposed to be down there? I mean, I understand, you know, people know myself because I serve as an alderperson, but I would like the same treatment when I go down there, that if I'm supposed to sign a board and show my ID, I don't care that I'm Cheryl Brown, city alderperson for the second ward. That information needs to be requested, and it was not. So whatever the standard is, I don't care who you are, you get that information from them.
Was that after the change was made to the city employees?
Yes.
I will discuss.
And it's not stated what needs to be presented, that you need to present your ID. There's nothing on the, on the gates, there's no information.
I think he said, didn't he put the sign out there where you have to show ID, and he said a couple cars went by, you didn't come in.
Right.
Sure.
They're supposed to, yeah, check ID, and you're supposed to sign the paper.
Didn't happen. Sign the paper, but.
No ID check, huh?
No ID check.
And there's also, is not a sign telling them that when the dumpsters are full, this gate will be closed.
They're closing, yeah.
There still is not a sign there.
Times are gone, everything has gone off that was off when I went down there.
And the sign is missing because they're missing that verbiage on there. The county was making a sticker that they put on it, they is, that would apply onto that floor or.
So they're off duty now.
Right, instead of redoing the whole sign, just.
Are they limiting the number of times a person can come down?
Once, well, four times a month. You come Saturday, once a day.
You can only come once, yeah, there's, come Saturday, one trip.
Right. I hate to admit that I went there and they did, I guess, first the book to sign in, all you have to sign in. Uh-oh, I got to sign in. So I didn't realize it was half any dollars. Address.
I just don't want our community to say, oh, you think you have special favor, Cheryl, and it's like, no, I don't have special favor. Yes, it is, and it travels fast, and there were plenty of people there that day when we were down there that were coming in, and if you're going to ask one, you got to ask all. And I, I want to be asked.
I said it before, it's a luxury, it's a service that most communities don't provide for people, so we want to make sure we can continue it, that we've got to make it affordable, but we're not blowing our budget, and I guess I asked Cheryl, are you going to put that on your finance? If you didn't authorize it, I don't know where we got authorization for the full-time employees to start doing that at overtime, right? So, you know, pick out.
We authorize it within.
What, excuse me?
We authorize it within.
Not as a separate entity piece.
No.
It, it has to be manned if it's part of their overtime.
Right, but we were, we had part-time employees manning it before, I don't ever remember anything coming across the table, authorize a change to authorize our full-time employees at time of half.
Does it have multiple overtime in the budget?
Do we have part-time employees at the DPW anymore, or is everyone full-time?
That's what I'm saying, I would have thought that that would have been brought up, hey, how are we supposed to handle this now, or whatever? Are we supposed to advertise them for somebody that's willing to do this? Apparently, the guy they weren't real happy with that was doing it, he kind of made a, I guess, made a job of sorting through the stuff, looking for stuff that he wanted to salvage and what have you, but he was there, they could rely on him, but they weren't real happy with him, but like I said, I think it puts a dent in the budget.
I think it goes to say, if it's going to be open, and all we have is our full-time employees, if it means that they end up being paid overtime, that's what happens. That, that would be what I would think, because we didn't make any other.
That's what I'm saying.
Arrangements for.
And I guess it's about how many times you want us to bring it to personnel or finance, that they're going to be on overtime, I mean. And that's kind of purpose of passing that overtime budget and allowing your supervisors to handle the work the way they do.
The budget. I guess I want to reiterate though, too, that people are doing larger home remodeling and construction projects, I want to keep reiterating that they need to get a dumpster, because I hear that there's a lot of construction things taken down there, too, that they probably should have gotten dumpster for. So please, if you're doing a large project, rent your dumpster.
Any other questions?
There's a flyer too, correct?
Correct.
Is that posted on our website, do we know?
Yep.
It used to be anyway.
Yeah, all the information.
Okay. Tell us how to get rid of refrigerators, freezers, metal, where to take your leaves and brush, and when you take your brass clippings down, take them out of the plastic bag and throw them in the garbage can that's there, or take them home to yours. Don't leave them in the plastic bags down there for the guys to be paid to cut them open, you know, if he wants.
And I think our new website design, where they rearrange things, makes it a lot easier to find. I like that.
I have an ordinance to read for Public Works. Ordinance to amend Chapter 12.12.040, Pren A, B, C, City of Juneau, ordinance for tree trimming. The common council of the City of Juneau ordains Section 12.12.040, Pren A, B, C, tree trimming is hereby amended to change. From A, trees standing on a private land adjacent to a public thoroughfare shall be trimmed and kept trimmed by the owner of such trees so as to maintain a clear space of not less than 10 feet above the sidewalk. Can I read A and A, otherwise it just gets.
Sure.
Yeah.
They're going to change A to, A, trees standing on private land adjacent to a public thoroughfare shall be trimmed and kept trimmed by the owner of such tree so as to maintain a clear space of not less than 10 feet above the sidewalk. It will be changed to and 15 feet above the roadway. So you've got a tree that's sticking out above the sidewalk and out in the street, you got to be 15 in the roadway, so trucks and big, the tractors are getting bigger and bigger, and paths. B, city street trees shall be trimmed and kept by the city so as to maintain a clear space of not less than 12 feet above the roadway, except that the common council may make special provisions in exceptional cases. Change to B, city streets, trees shall be trimmed and kept by the city as to maintain a clear space of not less than 15 feet above the roadway, except that the common council may make special provisions in exceptional cases. One example of an exceptional case would be you have an oak tree. There are certain months you should not trim an oak, because then you can cause the tree to have oak wilt, and it would die. So that needs to be cut in months that have an R in it. So that would be an exceptional case that would be presented. C, no person shall authorize any city-controlled tree to be trimmed, cut, or topped without the permission of the common council and/or its authorized agent. Will be changed to C, no person shall authorize any city-controlled tree to be trimmed, cut, or topped without the permission of the common council and/or the Department of Public Works' Director. First reading, June 8th, 2021.
Okay, it's an ordinance, so it's going to be read a second time next month before it passes.
With ordinances, do we normally have an ordinance number? You know, like this is ordinance number 20, or 2, 2021, or maybe slip that in the next one?
Yeah. Anything else from Public Works, Dave?
No, I will talk to Scott about the problems we've discovered and try and get them resolved.
Cable TV, Jane.
We did not meet, but I have some sad news, that Lisa Wolf took a new position in Watertown. So she resigned from her position at Cable TV, turned in our equipment for today.
So she's no longer in Columbus, is she?
No, she got a full-time position, was offered a very nice position in Watertown, so.
So she won't be helping us.
It was definitely a promotion for her, hated to lose her, but couldn't blame her. So, that's all I have.
Okay, questions for Cable TV? Moving on, CDA. CDA, we didn't have anything. Rec Director. We did meet. We did review and discuss and take action on the Wild Goose Camping Rules there, that was talked at length. We reviewed and discussed and took action on the Rage Soccer Fall 2021, Spring 2022 Season. They will be raising the base rate for the Rage Soccer Summer Program to $50. Uniform cost not to exceed $20. Volunteer and head coach discounts of $20 for volunteer and assistant coaches, and $25 for head coaches. Also, yet requirements for coaches and the addition of a U6 division. Playground and City Park are, are going on in June 7th, 2021. I'm assuming they're, they're ripped out all the equipment, and I'm assuming the playground, he means by that the playground equipment is being installed. They're still looking for renderings for the splash pad. Grant received from AARP to put it on movie in the park, I don't know if anybody caught that in the newspapers, they were advertising how they're going to be doing movies in the park. And they've got one part-time candidate that hasn't responded to their job offer, and Dodge will be using the community center for almost all of their summer camps and a few meetings. And that is about it. John sat in on a few of the meetings.
Yeah, the playground was put in, I believe, yesterday, I think they were finishing touches today, out there at City Park. And that one individual, for some reason, was not returning to the city's phone calls and stuff, so he was able to find two individuals to replace that one and just keep the same amount of hours that we had a budget for that original first person, so. So he's still, he has backup to, I'd say, full capacity.
Very good. Any questions on rec? Seeing none, Utility Commission report.
We had a meeting last night, and so I'm not a big adult taker, but I do have some stuff. Aaron Worthman from Baker Tilly came and he reviewed the 2020 financial audit with the commission. Some of the results, electric and water are in real good shape. The sewer is in a weaker position, but Baker Tilly are doing a rate study that will be done by the end of June with suggested rate adjustments for the commission to consider. Lori Runyon, who took Allison's place, settled in really good there, has updated the utility website with current staff and contact info. She also placed an internal ad for the vacant wastewater, wastewater superintendent position, and will post externally after the internal ad is posted for five days. Nick Allman continues to work with MSA on the Highland Street Project, and he also talked about the meeting that they had with the residents, so we talked about that before. Peter Gallin, who is, who is the interim wastewater superintendent, completed the 2020 CMAR report. The commission approved the report, and it will be sent to common council for approval, but it wasn't in time for tonight's agenda. The commission approved, they went into a closed session and came out, and the commission approved a $2 an hour increase for the interim wastewater superintendent, superintendent retroactive to mid-level. And that was about it.
Is there a deadline, I wonder, for that CMAR report? I thought it was June 30th, June 30th, right? So we can have a special meeting?
Oh, we're working around that, Sean.
What's that?
How are we working around that deadline?
There doesn't have to be a special meeting.
If you don't have it on the agenda, you can't deal with it tonight.
Yeah, I didn't get the information until after 7:00 last night, so.
That's understandable, but it wasn't done.
In a case like that, couldn't we add an emergency exception?
I would consider that an emergency.
No.
Well, the DNR probably does, if you come in, if you come in late with the thing.
Like something we could easily just do via Zoom or something, too, it's not a necessity that we get everybody together in one room.
Makes sense.
Okay.
An out the community.
Anything else? No questions? Moving on, and old business, just to be informed, I signed the papers, not yesterday, but about last Monday, for the sale of the city hall. Well, that has been sold, and I was told that there's already a, a business sign put in its place. I guess it's good that it's back on the tax rolls again, and I'm sure it'll work out quite well for the, for the people. Any new business tonight? Just bring you up to speed, South Main Street, you'll probably be seeing the final coat of paving. On that project tomorrow, they've got all the manholes ground down and the transitions ground down, ready for the final coat. And then moving on, provincial licenses. Jane, how would you like to read those?
Yeah, there's no provisional. Regular licenses from, that expire June 30th, 2022. Christine Sokowski, Brian Cook, Rachel Merkis, Zachary Rolhawke, Sunny Madden, Emily Jurick, Abigail Seal, Christine Focal Doc, sorry, Ryan Moles, Elizabeth Hathaway, Tamara Sarado, Bobby Schmidt, Lisa Berger, Tierra Vance, Carly Robilliard, Jennifer Doe Haley, Jennifer Doe Haley, doesn't.
I was going to bring in Haley Freedom.
It had a comma there, so I didn't know. Dela Shop, or Dela Shoppe, Daniel Yonkey, Holly Tank, Michelle Bartlett, Erica Friedenberg, Aleah Nye, Emily Pucks, Sherri Schmidt, Jordan Rungy, Sandra Becker, Michael Becker, Julie Mall, Charlie Griffin, Derek Kolowski, Virginia Lee, Amanda Schultz, Crystal Vetneese, Elizabeth Flash, Rebecca Grady, Heidi Brandt, Tyler Marks, Brenda Crokin, Amber Pazek, Abigail Jezwinski, Carol Solner, Zoe Hall, Ashlyn Peterman, and Rochelle Muth.
Sorry if I spotted your name. I recommend passage of the bartender's licenses.
Second. Motion by Foodie, second by Granton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Any other business? Entertained a motion, motion. Motion by Schuster.
Second.
Second by Brown. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. This meeting is closed.